Good evening. The June 10th, 2014 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Jezling?
Present.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Tuttle?
Here.
Mrs. Bryner?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to welcome everyone to the June 10th, 2014 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, every board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the District's Paperless Board of Education Agenda System Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer for information concerning the agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Time Warner Cable, Channel 96.96 in Mentor and Channel 96.22 in Mentor-on-the-Lake. The meeting can also be found on your YouTube channel, Cardinal TV, Mentor, Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. And first item is approval of minutes for our regular meeting on May 13th, 2014, and a special meeting May 29th.
So moved.
Second.
I would like to call to the board's attention that in the May 13th board meetings on Page 236, we discovered a typographical error in the total for the summer school appropriations. The original agenda had 51,000 even. The correct total, when we used our fingers and toes, was $51,900. So we have made that correction in the minutes presented tonight.
Thank you. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner?
Yes. Now we'll have our first hearing of the public on agenda items only. Sure. Did you want to come up here, please, speak?
Hi. My name is Pat Mulder. I have a son that will be a senior this year, and he's on the wrestling team. And I'd just like to challenge your choice of a coach. We tried this last year for half a season. There were numerous complaints. He isn't good with the kids. The kids would rather have somebody else. Two years ago, you passed them over. This year, you passed them over. You went looking for somebody else, thought you had somebody. That didn't work out. You go right back to them. I just feel there's other coaches in the Mentor School system that would be more adept to get the kids on the team than the choice you made. I mean, we didn't have a full team last year, and I don't really feel we'll have a full team again this year. If we do, we'll be ninth graders. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Gordon. I'm from Curlin Hills. I also have a son that's on the wrestling team. He was a freshman this year. He was one of five Letterman on this team because we didn't have hardly enough kids on that team to really field what I felt was a good team. I'd sent a letter to the board members expressing my concerns about extending a contract to Ray Lamanna. I'd like, if I could, to ask the board to table that request and possibly dig into some of the other things, pretty much like what Ray had said, or, excuse me, what Pat had said about the hiring procedure. Ray's been looked over twice for this position. It seems, at this point in time, this late in the game, that just hiring anybody is a real compromise for these students, these wrestlers that have worked really hard. And I kind of feel like, you know, we put forth a candidate that we thought was good. The administration had picked a different candidate, but had expressed that he had met all the qualifications of a head coach. And I think in my letter, I kind of detail out what I had sent to the administration, what I had felt, and what many other parents had felt was the, kind of, the duties and the responsibilities and the qualifications of a head wrestling coach. I think that we would, I would like to see the request tabled and further reviewed. I don't think that making a decision tonight on this matters much in terms of if we get somebody hired in the next four weeks, it would be just the same. I think you need to take a look at all the other extending circumstances with why the first person turned it down and why the other person that was re-interviewed for that position, why, in fact, he was not offered the position. And I think that's probably more a matter of, you know, the administration versus the school board. But this is kind of, we're kind of down to the, we're down to the goal line here. We're done with no time, and this is kind of what I think we should do. I don't have anything else.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
My name's Ray Wonk. My son, Aaron, was the senior captain this year for Mentor High, varsity Letterman. He's going, moving on and going to Mount Union, unfortunately, with no aid or no help from Mr. Lamanna. I think I'm in a unique position because I have three boys, one in the youth level, one in the junior high, and one that just completed the high school level. And I'm not here to attack Mr. Lamanna personally. Anybody who knows Ray knows Ray's a real high-character guy, real good moral guy, but I think we should expect that from anybody that we hire to work with any of our children. My main issue is that our complete program is just antiquated. I don't know how many of you are familiar with how wrestling works today from the youth, but there's a definite coalition from the youth to the junior high to the high school having success, not only as individuals, but having success as a team. And unfortunately, Mr. Lamanna, he doesn't feel that way. He feels more, in my conversations with him, that just having numbers, having kids involved in the program is what's best. Wrestling has kind of always been looked as a, like a little sister of the poor sport when compared to some of the more popular or more larger sports. And I think the main reason for that is that we don't hold the sport to the same expectations as we do basketball, or football, or anything else. We're happy to have participation. It's nice if one of them makes states. It's nice if we do good here at a tournament or that, but we accept mediocrity and average in this sport, and we shouldn't. And this isn't one or two parents. We've been blessed in the last 10 years in the Mentor area to have unbelievable talent of wrestlers. Unfortunately, they've gone on to win titles and are now wrestling at Lake Catholic, at St. Ed's, at St. Ignatius, at Gilmore at University School. I find it absolutely deplorable that three of the best junior high wrestlers in the state, and that's not my opinion, that's by record and fact, live on the same street in the city of Mentor, and not one of them is going to attend this high school. That there's a problem. There's a problem. There's a problem that we don't have a wrestling room. I've sent the board emails that the Plain Dealer did on the sanctuary of a wrestling room and what a wrestling room means to a wrestler as an alternative to violence, to street gangs, to drugs, to alcohol. I was blocked. You guys blocked me on your Facebook page. No vulgarity, no nothing. I simply forwarded an article from the Plain Dealer. But we need to hold the wrestling program, the wrestling coaches, the records, the achievements to the same level as we hold everybody else, because this is an individual sport. It's not a team sport. These boys, not that they, I'll never say that they work harder or do more than another athlete, but these kids are, it's one-on-one. There's nobody out there with them. And what they go through, and the kids who choose to work extra practices, to go to open mats, to travel to open tournaments, to prepare themselves to move up, I just don't understand the concept of just keep them interested in elementary, keep them interested in junior high, and once we get to the high school, they're just going to flick a switch and be ready to roll and do that against competition that hasn't been trained like that.
Mr. Wonk, I'm sorry. Can you wrap up, please?
That's all. That's all. Yep.
My name is Pat Snead. I speak as a parent. My sons, Dexter and Nathan Hofsnead, both wrestled in the Mentor wrestling program and both made it to the state tournament. As anybody who has known them knows, all-in in wrestling is all-in. This year, there have been some unfortunate circumstances in both the way this has played out the last season, but I will say that the level of integrity and the level of buy-in from the coaching end, from the staff that has been here, has always been pretty solid. It's a tough world out there with St. Ed's and all the other places you named. I know my sons wrestle junior cadet. They wrestled open mats at Solon, Maple Heights, Chanel when it was open. If you want to go all-in, you have to. And I think part of that is you have to be there every day as long as it takes to be to the highest level. I think Ray Lamanna has established, at least in my tenure history with him as my son's coach, that he will do that. And I just want to say, the context that you guys all mentioned is very specific. I know you're entirely plugged in. I was a wrestling parent. I had the gut-wrenching of seeing one of my sons lose a match to go to state and the other one win it simultaneously. They were born within 38 seconds of each other. Very tough moment. But I think that you have to understand, the facilities at Mentor High School in the district, we understand, we need to have wrestling facilities. There was a wrestling room ordained. It got turned into auxiliary gym. There are other things that matter here. And one of the things that matters is that the coach be a good teacher. And I just want to stand up for Ray Lamanna and say that. And he's a great coach, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on agenda items only? Okay. Thank you. We'll move on. All right. We have superintendent's report and recommendations. Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President and members of the board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of consent agenda items 5A1 through 5A4.
Do I have a motion? Thank you. Second. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. Every year, our Mentor classified employees sponsor an essay contest for fifth graders. I would like to congratulate all the winners and introduce MCE President Sarah Carver to come up front, who will be joined with Mr. Porter along with Mr. Shaw to recognize this year's winners.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson. The Mentor classified employees, with support from the Mentor Schools Foundation grant, sponsored the 12th Annual I Write to Read Essay Contest. Each fifth grader in the district was eligible to write an essay on how reading has changed his or her life. Tonight, we recognize one fifth grade winner from each of the participating elementary schools. Each will receive a pocket dictionary and a bookstore gift card as prizes. If the building principal is here, we would also like to invite you to join your student on stage as well, please. Our first recipient, from Bellflower Elementary, and I know Ms. Hardy is here in the audience, the principal, Sabrina Gorbey. And I would ask, once the students come up on stage, if you would shake the board members' hands and remain up on stage until all of the recipients are here. From Brentmore Elementary, Michael Summers, joined by Principal Ms. Hutto. From Fairfax Elementary, Sadie Zittrich.
Congratulations.
From Garfield Elementary, Samantha Habbit, joined by Principal Ms. Price. From Hopkins Elementary, Jade Nip, joined by Principal Ms. Miley. From Rice Elementary, Nina Patty, joined by Principal Ms. Rogers. We'd like to once again thank Ms. Carver for her leadership from the MCE end, and we want to, once again, a round of applause for all of our recipients tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Madam President, members of the board, we are very proud of our Mentor High School students who qualified for state competition in track and field. Congratulations to all of you. Mr. Wade, Mr. Casella, and Mr. Shaw will make the presentations.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, it's my pleasure to introduce the members of the girls and boys' track teams who qualified for last weekend's state track and field meet at Ohio State University. It's been a very successful season for our track program. Both the boys' and girls' teams were district champions this spring, and the boys' team won the Northeast Ohio Conference Valley Division title. Our girls' team is coached by Mr. Butler, but Mr. Butler couldn't be with us tonight, but we have a few members of our girls' team that are here with us tonight. Our girls' 4x400-meter relay team qualified for states. The members of this team were Cassie Rozick, Cassie here, Jamie Iben, Ayesha Mohammed, and Emma Lane. The girls ran 3 minutes 59 second relay, coming up just short, making it to the finals. Also qualifying for the state was our pole vaulter, Rachel Piazza. Rachel, I know you're here. Come on up. Rachel had a great spring. She broke her own school record twice, finally setting the school record at the state meet, jumping 11 feet 6 inches, which is our school record, which placed her 10th in the state of Ohio. Congratulations, Rachel. Our boys' team also was a success this year. Coach Bill Dennison is here with us tonight. I'd ask Coach Dennison to join me up on stage. We had three individuals and one relay team qualify for the state tournament. Our boys' 4x4 relay team also qualified for the states. Members of that relay team, if you're here tonight, if you would join me on stage, Keith McCormick, Darren Ingram, Austin Hankins, come on up, Austin, and Mark Walton. The boys ran 3 minute 19.81 second relay, which broke the school record and allowed them a fifth-place finish at our state meet. So congratulations to our 4x4 relay team. We had, we had two individuals that I don't believe are here with us tonight because they're at football. Mark Walton qualified as an individual in the open 400, and Eddie Doherty qualified for the second time in the high jump. He jumped 6 foot 2 at the state meet, finishing 13th in the state. The other state competitor who's with us tonight is John Morins. Come on up, John. John qualified for the state meet in both the shot put and discus. In the discus, he threw 155 feet 10 inches, placing him 10th in the state of Ohio. In the shot put, he threw 61 feet 3 inches in his final throw to finish a state runner-up this year. He also broke the school record earlier in the season with a throw of 68 feet 4 and 1/4 inches. So we have three, three kids here on stage that hold now school records at Mentor High School. Congratulations on a great spring. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casella. Madam President, members of the board, tonight, we turn the spotlight on one of Hopkins Elementary School students who's been recognized locally and regionally by Mentor Dispatch as a 911 hero. To tell this hero's story is Hopkins Elementary School Principal, Ms. Chris Miley, and I would ask Katrina Washington to come on up as well. Katrina?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson. As many of you know, our first grader, greater Mentor students attend a 911 kids program that is taught by Mentor dispatcher, Ms. Suzie Sistek. This class is one of the many programs used to help provide students with the foundation and tools when faced with an emergency. One of our students used this information to help a family member. It's my pleasure to recognize one of Hopkins' third-grade students, Katrina Washington, as a 911 hero. On May 16th, 2014, while Katrina was staying with her grandparents in Willowick, her grandmother collapsed and was unresponsive. At this time, at the time only Katrina and her grandmother were at home, Katrina didn't panic. She properly called 911 and asked for help. On May 30th, as Mr. Miller mentioned, Katrina was surprised with recognition at Hopkins by representatives from Mentor Safety Forces, including Chief of Police Knight, Ms. Sistek, and several police officers and firefighters from the city of Mentor. In addition, Katrina will be recognized next week at the city council meeting. We're very proud of Katrina, and I'm happy to say that her grandmother has recovered and is fine, and I believe is in the audience. And although no one wants to face this type of situation, adults included, it's fantastic that Katrina, at the age of nine, knew exactly what to do. Congratulations to Katrina, her parents, and grandparents.
Thank you, Mrs. Miley and Katrina. That's awesome. Madam President and members of the board, a little over a week ago, we celebrated the graduation of our high school seniors. Tonight, we celebrate a different graduation, that of our 2013-2014 retirees. It is with mixed emotions that we recognize our retiring faculty and staff. We thank them for their many years of dedicated service. Not all of them could be here tonight, but the ones that you do see here tonight represent 1,069 years of service and education. Wow. So that number would be a little bit larger if they were all able to make it, but we understand. So 709 certified years and 360 classified years of service. With that said, we wish you great success in the next chapter of your life and good health and happiness in retirement. As I read your name, please come forward and join myself, Mr. Shaw, and Mrs. Burnett on stage and line up and wait for the rest of the retirees as well. And I'm going to start with the certified staff, the teaching staff. The first one I'd like to call up is Rosemary Bateman. Rosemary started her full-time teaching career with Mentor Schools in August of 92 as a kindergarten teacher at Bellflower Elementary. At the beginning of the 99-2000 school year, she moved to the first grade and has continued to serve the students of Bellflower in that capacity for the past 14 years. Rosemary has a total of 28 years in education. Rosemary Bateman. Next up is Kathy Bontempo. Kathy began her career with Mentor Schools in October of 1988 as a math teacher at Mentor High School. She has continued serving the students of Mentor High School in that capacity for the past 26 years. Kathy has a total of 35 years in education. Kathy Bontempo. Deborah Serpak. Is she here? Debbie began her career with Mentor Schools in August of 1985 as a special education teacher at Hopkins Elementary School. She continued in special ed at both Lake and Headlands until the 1991 school year, when she started teaching third grade at Bellflower Elementary. Debbie has continued to serve the third graders at Bellflower for the past 23 years. She has a total of 35 years in education. Congratulations, Debbie. Nancy Chase. Okay. We're going to go ahead and move on. Marsha Clark. Marsha began her career with Mentor Schools at Brentmore Elementary, teaching kindergarten in August of 92. She has continued her career exclusively at Brentmore, teaching all the primary grades for the past 22 years. Marsha will retire with a total of 32 years in education. Marsha Clark. Deborah Cavelli. qualified for the second time in the high jump. He jumped six foot-two at the state meet, finishing thirteenth in the state. The other state competitor who's with us tonight is John Morins. Come on up, John. John qualified for the state meet in both the shot put and discus. In the discus, he threw one-hundred-and-fifty-five feet, ten inches, placing him tenth in the state of Ohio. In the shot put, he threw sixty-one feet, three inches in his final throw to finish a state runner-up this year. He also broke the school record earlier in the season with a throw of sixty-eight feet, four and a quarter inches. So we have three kids here on stage that hold now school records at Mentor High School. Congratulations on a great spring. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casella. Madam President, members of the board, tonight we turn the spotlight on one of Hopkins Elementary School students who's been recognized locally and regionally by Mentor Dispatch as a nine-one-one hero. To tell this hero's story is Hopkins Elementary School Principal, Mrs. Chris Miley, and I would ask Katrina Washington to come on up as well. Katrina?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson. As many of you know, our first-grader Mentor students attend a nine-one-one kids program that is taught by Mentor dispatcher, Ms. Suzie Sistek. This class is one of the many programs used to help provide students with the foundation and tools when faced with an emergency. One of our students used this information to help a family member. It's my pleasure to recognize one of Hopkins' third-grade students, Katrina Washington, as a nine-one-one hero. On May sixteenth, two thousand fourteen, while Katrina was staying with her grandparents in Willowick, her grandmother collapsed and was unresponsive. At this time, at the time only Katrina and her grandmother were at home, Katrina didn't panic. She properly called nine-one-one and asked for help. On May thirtieth, as Mr. Miller mentioned, Katrina was surprised with recognition at Hopkins by representatives from Mentor Safety Forces, including Chief of Police Knight, Ms. Sistek, and several police officers and firefighters from the city of Mentor. In addition, Katrina will be recognized next week at the city council meeting. We're very proud of Katrina, and I'm happy to say that her grandmother has recovered and is fine, and I believe is in the audience. And although no one wants to face this type of situation, adults included, it's fantastic that Katrina, at the age of nine, knew exactly what to do. Congratulations to Katrina, her parents, and grandparents.
Thank you, Mrs. Miley and Katrina. That's awesome. Madam President and members of the board, a little over a week ago, we celebrated the graduation of our high school seniors. Tonight, we celebrate a different graduation, that of our two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen retirees. It is with mixed emotions that we recognize our retiring faculty and staff. We thank them for their many years of dedicated service. Not all of them could be here tonight, but the ones that you do see here tonight represent one thousand and sixty-nine years of service and education. So that number would be a little bit larger if they were all able to make it, but we understand. So seven-hundred-and-nine certified years and three-hundred-and-sixty classified years of service. With that said, we wish you great success in the next chapter of your life, and good health and happiness in retirement. As I read your name, please come forward and join myself, Mr. Shaw, and Mrs. Burnett onstage and line up and wait for the rest of the retirees as well. And I'm going to start with the certified staff, the teaching staff. The first one I'd like to call up is Rosemary Bateman. Rosemary started her full-time teaching career with Mentor Schools in August of ninety-two as a kindergarten teacher at Bellflower Elementary. At the beginning of the ninety-nine-two-thousand school year, she moved to the first grade and has continued to serve the students of Bellflower in that capacity for the past fourteen years. Rosemary has a total of twenty-eight years in education. Next up is Kathy Bontempo. Kathy began her career with Mentor Schools in October of nineteen eighty-eight as a math teacher at Mentor High School. She has continued serving the students of Mentor High School in that capacity for the past twenty-six years. Kathy has a total of thirty-five years in education. Deborah Serpak. Is she here? Debbie began her career with Mentor Schools in August of nineteen eighty-five as a special education teacher at Hopkins Elementary School. She continued in special ed at both Lake and Headlands until the nineteen ninety-one school year, when she started teaching third grade at Bellflower Elementary. Debbie has continued to serve the third graders at Bellflower for the past twenty-three years. She has a total of thirty-five years in education. Nancy Chase. Okay. We're going to go ahead and move on. Marsha began her career with Mentor Schools at Brentmore Elementary, teaching kindergarten in August of ninety-two. She has continued her career exclusively at Brentmore, teaching all the primary grades for the past twenty-two years. Marsha will retire with a total of thirty-two years in education. Deborah Cavelli. Debbie started her career with Mentor Schools in August of nineteen eighty-six as an English reading teacher at Mentor High School. In the twenty-seven years with the district, she has continued to teach English at the high school, as well as Ridge and Shore. Debbie will retire with a total of thirty years in education. I'm reading this, Ellen. I didn't write this in the years in here, so, just so you know. Ellen was employed with Mentor Schools in nineteen seventy as a classroom assistant. They began her full-time teaching career with the district in August of nineteen ninety as a grade-four teacher at Bellflower. Ellen has continued to serve the students at Bellflower, teaching grades three, four, and five at various times for the last twenty-four years. Ellen will retire with a total of thirty-five years in education. Cynthia Guest. Cindy began her career with Mentor Schools in September of ninety-seven as a district tutor. Beginning in February of ninety-eight, she received a part-time contract as a preschool teacher housed at Mentor Methodist Church. In the ninety-nine-two-thousand school year, Cindy was awarded a full-time contract and taught preschool at Lake, Reynolds, Garfield, and Headlands Elementary Schools before the preschool program was permanently housed at Ridge Middle School, beginning in the ten-eleven school year. Cindy will retire with seventeen years of service with Mentor Schools and a total of thirty years in education. Robert Guthrie. Bob was awarded a teaching contract with Mentor Schools in August of eighty-four and taught fifth grade at Headlands Elementary. With the beginning of the eighty-five-eighty-six school year, Bob moved to sixth grade at Headlands, where he continued to teach until the district transitioned to middle school with the start of the oh-eight-oh-nine school year. Bob moved to Shore Middle School and taught science until his retirement at the end of the thirteen-fourteen school year. He has thirty years of service to the students of Mentor Public Schools and a total of thirty-two years in education. William Henrich. Bill started his career with Mentor Public Schools in September of eighty-four as a science teacher at Ridge Middle School, where he continued to serve with distinction the students of Ridge until his retirement in February of two thousand fourteen. Throughout his career with Mentor Schools, Bill has been the recipient of numerous awards and recognitions for his innovative and creative teaching style, most notably of which was Mentor Schools' Choice for the Ohio Teacher of the Year Award in nineteen ninety-six. Bill sums up his educational philosophy with the words "hard work, accountability, quality, and pride." Bill has a total of thirty years of service with the Mentor Public Schools. Terri Hirschman. Terri began her career with Mentor Public Schools in September of seventy-eight, teaching vocal music to the students at Rice Elementary and Ridge Middle School. She continued teaching vocal music at Ridge, then taught system-wide in two thousand four and two thousand five. With the start of the oh-eight-oh-nine school year, Terri taught exclusively at the high school, and additionally has served as vocal music director at Mentor High School and music department chairperson. Terri will retire with thirty-six years of service to the students of Mentor Schools. Carol Hoover. Nope. Susan Kaser. Sue? No. Laurie started her career at Mentor Schools in August of nineteen eighty-four as a vocal music teacher, serving the students of Brentmore, Center Street, and Headlands Elementary Schools. With the beginning of the eighty-eight-eighty-nine school year, she taught system-wide and then went to Shore Middle School to teach vocal music with the start of the ninety-two-ninety-three school year. Laurie has served the students of Shore Middle School for the past twenty-two years, not only as her vocal music teacher, but also as the director of the Shoreline Singers Shore Middle Schools Show Choir. Additionally, Laurie has served as the director for the highly acclaimed Top Twenty-Five Show Choir at Mentor High School. She has also taught band at both the elementary and secondary levels during her career. Laurie is retiring this year with a total of thirty years of service to the students of Mentor Public Schools. Dan started his career with Mentor Public Schools in September of nineteen eighty as a guidance counselor at Mentor High School. Dan has continued serving the students of Mentor High School as a guidance counselor for the past thirty-four years. During his years with Mentor Schools, Dan also has had the opportunity to coach and advise various sports and student clubs, as well as serve as department coordinator of the guidance department. Dan has a total of forty-four years in education. Cindy began her career with Mentor Public Schools twenty-eight years ago, in August of nineteen eighty-five, as a physical education teacher at the elementary level. Through the years, she has served the students of Sterling Morton, Fairfax, Hopkins, Headlands, and Brentmore. Cindy retires with thirty years total in education. Denise Marinick. Denise began her career with Mentor Public Schools in August of nineteen seventy-nine. She taught second grade at Headlands Elementary School for the next two years until the eighty-nine-ninety school year. At that time, Denise moved to Garfield Elementary and taught first grade. She remained at Garfield, but moved to second grade at the beginning of the ninety-eight-ninety-nine school year. Denise retires with thirty-five years of service to the students of Mentor Public Schools. Christine began her career with Mentor Public Schools as a physical education teacher at Headlands and Sterling Morton Elementary Schools in August of nineteen eighty-nine. In addition to Headlands and Sterling Morton, Christine has taught PE at Bellflower, Rice, Shore, Hopkins, and Brentmore at various times in her twenty-five years with Mentor Schools. Christine retires this year with a total of thirty-three years of service and education. Cynthia Smeltz. Karen worked part-time, as a part-time reading tutor for Mentor Schools, beginning in September of nineteen eighty-six, but began a full-time teaching position with the district in February of eighty-eight, when she was awarded a position at Brentmore Elementary as a fifth-grade teacher. Karen has remained at Brentmore, teaching fifth, second, first, and third grades at various times in the last twenty-six years. Karen has a total of twenty-eight years in education. John Stevens. Patty began her career with Mentor Public Schools in August of eighty-one as an English teacher at Memorial. She has taught English to the students of Memorial, Shore, Ridge, and Mentor High School at various times in her years with Mentor Schools. Patty has been exclusively at Memorial since the ninety-three-ninety-four school year and has served the students of the Mentor Public Schools for a total of thirty-two years. Next, we'd like to recognize the classified members from MCE. First up is Gwen Barone. Gwen began her career with Mentor Public Schools as a we-care instructor in August of eighty-nine. During the ninety-six-ninety-seven school year, she was hired as a long-term sub-classroom assistant at Orchard Hollow, then the following year at Sterling Morton. With the start of the ninety-nine-two-thousand school year, Gwen was hired as a full-time intervention aide at Sterling Morton and then at Orchard Hollow in August of two thousand. Gwen has remained at Orchard Hollow as a classroom assistant until her retirement at the end of the thirteen-fourteen contract year. Gwen retires with twenty-five years of service to Mentor Public Schools. Shirley began her full-time career with Mentor Public Schools in August of eighty-three as a playground aide at Center Street Village Elementary School. In October of eighty-four, Shirley moved to Brentmore as an office aide until August of two thousand, when she was awarded the position of Career Tech Education Department Secretary at the high school. Shirley has worked diligently and efficiently at this position, serving the Career Tech students at Mentor High School until her retirement effective this year. She has a total of thirty-two years of service to Mentor Public Schools. Michelle Fulmer. Michelle started working for Mentor Public Schools in October of seventy-seven as a playground aide at Center Street Village Elementary School. In October of seventy-eight, she moved to Bellflower as an educational assistant, and then to Memorial in eighty-one, and Rice in eighty-four. In eighty-seven, Michelle went to the high school as a unit secretary. She eventually moved to the guidance department and eventually the main office of Mentor High School. Michelle is well-known for her creative staffing ability, especially when flu season coincides with major in-service days. She works hard to ensure all the classes are covered and that all the students' academic needs were taken care of. The staff and students at Mentor High School appreciate the many hats Michelle has worn throughout the years, and she wears each one well. There were only two days of the school year that I would not want to go to the high school and see her, and those were when her Steelers beat my Bengals, and so the following Monday, I did not want to see her because she would ride me. Michelle has thirty-seven years of service to Mentor Public Schools. Laurie Goddick. Laurie started her career with Mentor Public Schools in August of sixty-eight as a twelve-month secretary. From nineteen sixty-nine to nineteen seventy-eight, Laurie worked first at the East Shore Center School Office as a secretary, and then left for a time to be a stay-at-home mom, which she will tell you is her favorite job. In nineteen ninety-one, Laurie returned to Mentor Public Schools as secretary at Memorial Middle School. She spent the next seventeen years at Memorial, not only working as a secretary there, but also participating in extracurricular activities, such as a cheerleading advisor and student council advisor for many years. Laurie not only touched many students' lives at Memorial with her kind and gentle demeanor, but built many lasting friendships with fellow staff members as well. In two thousand eight, Laurie accepted the position of administrative assistant in the K-12 office at the administration building. For the last six years, Laurie has been Bill Porter's right-hand person. She has worked efficiently and diligently and has continually gone above and beyond expectations. Her preparation for monthly principal meetings always included a delicious homemade breakfast, and the staffs at Memorial and the administration building always look forward, and still do, to popcorn Fridays. Laurie retires with thirty-three years of service to Mentor Public Schools, and her successor will have an assortment of designer shoes to fill. Peggy Kramer. Peggy started with Mentor Public Schools in January of two thousand two as a long-term intervention aide at Lake Elementary, and then was hired full-time in September of two thousand two as an educational assistant at Rice Elementary. She worked at Rice until the oh-five-oh-six school year, when she went to both Hopkins and Fairfax. In October of oh-six, she returned to Rice, where she has served as classroom assistant until her retirement this year. Peggy has a total of thirteen years of service with the Mentor Public Schools. Judy Miller. Judy started her career with Mentor Public Schools as an educational assistant at Hopkins Elementary in August of nineteen ninety-one. In September of ninety-six, Judy moved to Rice Elementary, where she has continued to serve the students of Rice as a classroom assistant until her retirement in October of two thousand thirteen. Judy has twenty-seven years of service with Mentor Public Schools. Mike began his career with Mentor Public Schools in September of nineteen eighty-four as a chauffeur, material handler at Mentor High School. In December of that same year, Mike became a custodian at Rice Elementary and continued in the custodial classification, working at various times at the high school, Memorial, Ridge, and then finally back to Rice as the head custodian in two thousand seven. In two thousand twelve, Mike moved to Memorial until his retirement in January of two thousand fourteen. Mike has a total of thirty years of service with Mentor Public Schools. Joe Radar Ray. Radar started his career with Mentor Public Schools in December of eighty-one as a custodian at Fairfax. In March of eighty-four, he was awarded the position of head custodian at Fairfax and has served the staff and students of Fairfax Elementary for the last thirty years. Generations of Fairfax students and numerous staff members have come to know and appreciate the hard-working, dedicated, kind, and caring Mr. Radar, who does his job with diligence and a great sense of humor. Radar has a total of thirty-three years of service to the students and staff of Mentor Vicki started substituting for the district as a classroom assistant in September nineteen ninety-six, and then, after several long-term sub-assignments, was awarded a full-time classroom assistant position in March of two thousand at Bellflower Elementary. Vicki has continued to serve the students of Bellflower as a classroom assistant for the past fourteen years, and retires with a total of eighteen years of service to Mentor Mike began his career with Mentor Public Schools in April of nineteen ninety-four as a custodian at Mentor High School, where he served the staff and students until two thousand five, when he moved to Hopkins Elementary School. Mike continued at Hopkins until August of eleven, at which time he returned to the high school as a third-chief custodian until his retirement in September of two thousand thirteen. Mike has served the staff and students of the district for a total of nineteen years. Joanna began her service to the students of Mentor Schools in October of seventy-nine in the transportation department as a bus driver. Joanna has continued to serve hundreds of young passengers through the years, and as the first and last schoolperson, they saw each morning and evening and gave them a sense of security and familiarity. Joanna has a total of thirty-six years of service to the Mentor Public Schools when she retired this past December. Jane started her career with Mentor Schools as a bus driver in September of nineteen sixty-seven. She transported her young passengers until nineteen eighty-four, when she relocated to Texas. Upon returning to Ohio in two thousand, Jane was rehired in the Mentor Public Schools' transportation department as a bus assistant. She has diligently served the students of Mentor Schools in that capacity for the last fourteen years. Jane has a total of thirty-one years of service with the Mentor Public Schools. At this time, moving on to the administrative retirees. Gail started her career with Mentor Schools in August of nineteen ninety, serving the students of Mentor High School as the Career Tech Education Coordinator. She continued to serve in that capacity for the past twenty-four She continued to serve in that capacity for the past 24 years until her retirement in February of 2014. Gail has always been a strong advocate for the CTE program and students, and has always worked diligently to ensure that all students' individual academic needs were met and even exceeded. She retires with a total of 38 years in education. We congratulate Gail and offer our best wishes for all of her future endeavors.
Is Jane Archer here? I don't think we saw Jane. Okay, this concludes our acknowledgement and thank you to our retirees. This place won't be the same without you. Thank you very, very much.
On behalf of the board, I would like to say thank you and congratulations on your retirement. Well deserved, and enjoy. You will be missed here. At this time, we'll take a short recess, five minutes. Anyone that would like to leave is welcome to do so, and you're welcome to stay if you'd like. Okay, we're ready to reconvene our meeting.
Madam President, members of the board, I am recommending approval of the AP textbooks listed under item five.
Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, I'm recommending approval that the March 16th, 2015 compensatory day, previously approved on the 14-15 calendar, be changed to April 2nd. This is due to a change in testing that we weren't aware of when we made the calendar. This day will go adjoining spring break, so one extra day at spring break.
So moved. Second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, I'm recommending approval of agenda item C1 related to certified licensed staff, and C2 through C4, all related to human resource matters.
So moved.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam President, members of the board, I'm recommending that the administrative staff reappointment book for the 2014-2015 school year be approved.
Was that under C?
Where's that?
I don't think it's under C.
It isn't?
That was part of the item C. If you would like a separate motion, I can show it.
I didn't see it.
Is that under C?
I didn't see it.
It said under C.
Uh-uh.
You know what? We'll have to table it for next time.
Yeah, I don't think we got it. I don't think we got it.
I don't think the board has it, Paul.
Is it on the?
Board docs?
What item was it?
How did we miss that?
I don't know. I think at this point, we'll move it to next month if we can.
Yeah, I don't think we got it.
Okay.
What was it, under 4D?
Yeah, I had it under C online. So I apologize for that mistake.
That's okay, we can table it till next month.
Yep.
Yeah, I didn't see it. Was it an add-on later?
Bring that back next month.
Yeah, we'll bring that back next month.
This concludes my part of tonight's agenda.
Just a point of order. Do we need a motion to table that, Dan?
Um, I think we can just change the agenda like that.
Was it in the agenda we received? If so, then we do need...
I don't see it, so...
Said it was in board docs.
It sounds like there's a couple different topics.
It was on the revised agenda that went out on Friday as item D, but if that hasn't been picked up by all the board members. Just to be proper, I agree with Mr. Shaw, perhaps the wisest course would be a motion to table to the next board meeting.
Please, and I know I was in board docs a couple times this week, and I'm sorry I didn't pick that up.
Yeah, I was supposed to put it on my board.
Is that okay? We table it till next month?
Yeah, no, that should be fine.
We need a motion, a second.
I'll make the motion to table then.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner?
Yes.
That's, nope, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Board of Education Report and Recommendations, business? Do you have anything? Nobody has business?
No.
Okay, Legislative Report, Mr. Tuttle?
Well, I'm sure you read that and received the notice that Mary received a thank-you letter for our involvement and the information we provided to Senator Eklund. But this, it's really nice, and the legislative report has some good points to share. The advocacy that we expressed, Mr. Wilson pulled together the communication, and Mary and I signed it, sent out 18 letters, was it, Dan? 18, 20? Yes. It did help, positive. It's interesting to note that the, here's, here's one of the positive changes of the two that I'd like to point out. The provisions allowing districts to use proceeds from the sale of property to pay for permanent improvements, actually I have three, and removal of the provisions that would have prohibited school districts from challenging property values when assumed to be set too low for tax purposes. That's really good news. In addition to that, the, the change they did, although to me they negotiated and came to a midpoint, and that's regarding the assessed value rate for tax purposes for new investments and replacement water, public utility, tangible, personal property tax. That's a mouthful. So, future ones are going to get the reduced rate down to 25%. The existing assets on the books today will remain at 88%. So, the positive side of that is it protects 1.2 million, 1,221,000, which is fantastic. So, Dan, thank you very much for that.
That was an important piece of, as far as following up with some legislators, so good team effort.
Yeah, very good.
Excellent.
That's it, thank you. That's it? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chief Financial Officers Report and Recommendations, Mr. Wilson.
It's recommended the financial statements for the month of May 2014 be accepted and placed on file for audit.
So moved.
Second.
As we discussed when we approved the update to the forecast, we anticipate revenues this year being approximately 104% of budget, revenues and expenses being about 2% under, and these statements now 11 months through the year do reflect that prediction.
Okay, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education ratify the investment transactions presented in Exhibit 7-B.
So moved. Second.
We got all excited about the 0.4% investment. We'll go out a year and a half, but that's the best we've done in six months.
Take what we can get, right?
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the interfund transfer presented in Exhibit 7-C.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle? Mrs. Bryner?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the appropriation modifications listed in Exhibit 7-D.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Please call the roll.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the supplemental appropriations presented in Exhibit 7-E.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the two invoices presented in Exhibit
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the Mentor Public Library tax budget as approved by the Mentor Public Library trustees and presented in Exhibit 7-G.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner?
Yes.
That completes my items for this evening.
Unfinished business? None? New business?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to recommend that, as we have done in past years, we set a special meeting date at as late in June as possible to authorize all the final transactions to close out the 2013-2014 fiscal year. Typically, these meetings take approximately 15 minutes. We could have something prepared first thing in the morning or on your way home. We are hopeful for perhaps Friday morning, June 27th, or either morning or on your way home on Thursday, June 26th would be our preference to allow us time to properly prepare all of our transactions.
Does the 27th look for everyone?
AM is perfect for me.
AM?
Mm-hmm.
7:30 work for everyone?
Mm-hmm.
This is June 27?
Yep.
Friday, June 27?
Wonderful, thank you.
Bill, does that work for you?
Yes, yeah, that'll be fine.
Okay, 7:30 meeting work?
7:30.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that okay?
Thank you.
All right, 7:30 on 6/27. Okay, anything else, Mr. Wilson?
No.
Okay, any other new business? Okay, we'll have our final hearing of the public on any items. I see none, and we don't need an executive session?
No.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryner?